Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 12th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask that if you have cell phones, pagers, or other similar devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them, we would appreciate that. If you are one of the two people still in the chamber who wanted to address us about something and didn't sign up, there are signup sheets like this. They're on the table outside the chambers. And if you would just indicate which case you want to address us about, we'd be happy to listen to you and discuss it with you. First item of business commissioners is approval of the January 29th minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's an error on item number eight. On the PC 10406, since I seconded the motion to deny it, I don't think that I voted no. I'm almost positive I didn't. So that's, that's an error. What's... Other than that, I move approval of the minutes.
Yeah. Second? Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve the minutes as corrected. Pass your vote. Cast your votes, I should say. And we need some lights up here. And they're approved. And we have continuance requests. J.J.
Three uncontested continuance requests. Item 12, C 6679 deferred to February 26th. Item 13, PUD 1567 deferred to February 26th. And item 14, PUD 1569 to February 26th.
Is there anyone here today who wanted to address us on either of those three cases? Is the last three on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance.
We have a motion in second to approve the uncontested continuance. It's cast your votes. And they're approved.
We have two new continuances. Item 7, C 6694, request deferred to February 26th. And item 8, PC 10383, be withdrawn.
Anyone here who wanted to address us on item seven or eight on our agenda?
Move the new request. Did anybody happen to see Buck's request? Why that was... Did it get answered?
Oh, yeah. I talked to him.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, as did I. Sent me a note too. Okay, we have a motion in second to the two additional continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today?
Okay, first item for public hearing. It's item 1, C 6178, extension of the preliminary plot of Mustang Park, west of Mustang Road and south of Southwest 44th.
Commissioners, this is routine. I'm not sure we... Do we need a discussion on it? I'll just take a motion. Move approval? Okay, motion in second to approve item 1. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Item 2, C 6698, final plan of Brookstone Ridge Phase 1, located east of Mustang Road and south of Southwest 29th.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll on behalf of the applicant. This is the first phase of Brookstone Ridge, Southwest 29th Mustang Road, 69 lots on 20 acres. We agree with the TEs. Staff's recommended approval, and we'd ask for your approval.
No one signed up. Nick?
One question. TE 3 talks about completing things in the adjacent developments. You're good with that. I understand.
Yes.
But this application perhaps premature because of... Or why are you going forward with this application at this point? I guess is my question.
The intent is to come right on the heels of those other two additions with construction. And so then, once they're completed, hopefully shortly after this one will be completed as well.
Well, again, with TE 3 requiring those, those things, you know, I don't mind going forward with this. It just looks premature.
Sure.
No one signed up?
I move to approve.
We have a motion in second to approve item 2. Cast your votes. And it's approved.
Item 3, C 6699, final plan of the pinnacle at Brookstone Phase 1, located east of Mustang Road and south of Southwest 29th.
Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll again on behalf of the applicant. And this is the first phase of the pinnacle of Brookstone. This is the addition to the north of the previous application. It's got 72 lots on 28 acres. It conforms with subdivision regs and preliminary plats. Staff has recommended approval, and we agree with all the TEs, and ask for your approval on this one.
Move approval? Second. We have a motion in second to approve item 3. Cast your votes. That's approved. Thank you.
Item 4, SPUD 808, application by ERC Land, Terre Zone 12, 205 Southwestern Avenue, from AA to the SPUD.
Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll on behalf of the applicant. And this SPD application is basically an extension of PUD 1467 for the traditions at Westmore Apartments. You can see on your map, it sits right there adjacent to it. It's to expand that PUD to allow some more apartment buildings there. Staff has recommended approval. We agree with the TEs, and we have to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, no one signed up? Move approval? Second. We have a motion in second to approve item 4. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you.
Item 5, PUD 1572, application by Oklahoma Christian University and Teal Ridge Manor Corporation, Terre Zone 2501, East Memorial Road.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Bill Collins here for the applicants. And I don't have a whole lot to say. This one's... The university's been a victim of its own success. It's had the highest January enrollment in its history, and it's grown steadily the last several years. So the university is updating its plan and allowing the gradual conversion of the Teal Ridge Manor senior citizen living into university housing. I've got Stephen Eck with me, who's Vice President and General Counsel, to ask, to answer any specific questions you may have. We've met extensively with staff and agreed on everything.
I just have one question. As it related to the development of the 200 acres, that access roads, how many of those access roads will lead out from the property onto streets, the major streets?
No more than what's there right now.
Okay. Is it four entryways on Beeson? Is it four?
Stephen?
There's a parking lot.
Sir? Come on up. Come to the microphone and give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm Stephen Eck, Vice President and General Counsel for Oklahoma Christian University. There are, there's a parking lot along Benson Drive that leads right into the Harvey Business Center, where we have our evening Masters of Business Administration program. And there are four entrances into that parking lot off of Benson.
Okay.
And it doesn't go into the main kind of residential area of campus. It's just one building that that accesses there.
Okay. And then, for example, coming out on Boulevard, would you use the Teal Manor entry and exit to the campus going from that direction?
Yes, right now...
You wouldn't be an additional road there?
Uh...
There's some park?
No, there's not an additional road there.
Walking trails and park, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no additional road there. We'd still use that same road.
I also have a question on the application. You are going to have one LED sign on each road of the nine monument signs you're going to put up. Is that right? But is this a electronic message display sign that... What level of sign will you have? There are certain levels, J.J.
One, two, and three.
And I would want the lowest, the lowest level of your LED or EMD sign being allowed in this application. That would be number, you know, level one.
Okay. Yeah. And if you don't have any current plans for LED signs...
Okay.
Other than right along Memorial there.
Right. But if you do, it'll be level one. Just, that'll be part of the, of the TE. Okay?
Okay.
That makes sense. And I suppose you'd want the same thing on the Eastern Avenue side as well, wouldn't you? We have plans for, to place these signs at the two main entrances, on Memorial and in the eastern...
I understand. But those are, those are eight-foot monument signs, and one on each of those streets may be...
Yes.
An EMD sign, and that will be at level one.
Okay.
That's acceptable.
We're fine with that.
All right.
With that addition of the sign, we move for adoption. Okay, we have a motion in the second to approve item 5 as conditioned with the EMD signs. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6, SPD 794, application by Charles Allen, Terre Zone 100, Northwest 114th Street.
My name's Charles Allen, Allen Engineering. Dr. Bayless just arrived. I understand somebody signed up to speak on this project also. We've, we've met with the staff and made quite a few changes, agreed to the appearance corridor, agree with the, the three, I mean, two of the three conditions. I guess we'd like to discuss item 2, the sign. There's an existing billboard on accessory sign. And then we've also submitted a, a new elevation of the proposed sign. It's only a 30-foot height, 200 foot square, 200 square foot.
What we're looking at now is, is it 16-foot tall sign?
It's 30-foot tall.
What am I reading? What did I... Oh, I was...
Chairman, it's a 30-foot pole sign with, with flashing lights on the top of it.
Well, Rick, I have a couple of comments, because I'm not sure everything that we talked about last time's addressed. We eliminated outdoor performances, as I recall, and I see that's still in the document.
I didn't remember it being that way. We met with staff. Staff didn't remember it either. But we're happy to eliminate if that's a problem.
That was one thing. The non-accessory sign language under the sign section should be limited to the existing sign.
I agree.
Sign.
We agreed to that. But item 2 says no accessory signs.
Pardon me?
Item 2 says no accessory signs, and that's what we're object, objecting to, is that we already have one existing.
Right. We'll amend that to be, to take care of the existing sign.
Sure. That's, that's not the latest sign. The sign that's up there, that's not the latest one that we submitted.
Well, the one I'm looking at in my packet, or that's been given to me as a handout, appears to be 16 feet of sign, 30 feet tall, with EMD.
40 feet tall, I think, is it?
Well, on the handout, it appears to be changed to 30. But in any event, I'm seeing what I believe to be a, a 30-foot pole sign with EMD that is not consistent with TE 2. If we amend TE 2 to say non-accessory signs are prohibited except for the one existing sign, that still doesn't address the EMD part of it. This is somewhat of a sensitive site as you lower around that curve at highway speed. And with this kind of signage, it just really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me.
Anyone else?
Are there protesters?
No.
Nobody signed up? Other than the letter?
Well, I see people sitting out here who spoke before.
Wait till I hear from them.
All right, if we have protesters...
Good afternoon. Randall Shaded, represent Deakle Auctioneers, Deakle Real Estate, Lewis and Susan Deakle, and Jeremiah Graham, who owns Jeremiah's Car Care. They're all within 300 feet of this property. We were here last time and expressed our objections, and really, nothing's changed. Our primary objection is the use of this property is totally incompatible with industrial at this area. This is an entertainment use, and we, it's a single, this spud is a single use. When you look at it, I think Commissioner Powers made that comment last time when she was here. So we object to, the use is not compatible with the area or the plan. We continue to object to any alcohol use on this site. I drove down from Edmund today, and I don't recall going once a year south of Memorial all the way to the Sixth Street exit. I don't think there's any alcohol being served on Broadway anywhere. And we don't want it in our area, particularly in an industrial area where these people can wander around after the events that are going to take place there. Object to both non-accessory and accessory signs. I understand there is a non-conforming sign on that property. I think it's there as long as it's there under Oklahoma law. But we object to any other signs, and certainly object to electronic signs on this site. I think they've changed the metal siding to tilt up. We'd like to see all tilt up or brick on all four sides of this building. If you've seen Mr. Deakle's building, you know it's got brick and tilt up on all four sides, wrought iron fence in front of it. A very nice, attractive building, and we would like for this site, if it goes in in front of us, to be equally attractive. There is a serious water issue, drainage issue. Again, if you've driven this site, you can see it is the low area for basic, this quarter section at least. I know of three other contracts that were on this property in the past, that when they did their due diligence and the drainage opted not to purchase this property because of that issue. We feel that study needs to be done before you authorize this type of use and zoning. The outdoor concert, I think I heard them say they did eliminate, which we appreciate that. We did, did not want that on the site. We would request if they, if they are allowed this use, that they do a masonry site-proof fence between the Deakle property and this property. Otherwise, the 1,300 or so users of this facility at any one time will be using our parking lot, and they are not entitled to use our private parking lot. And then lastly, there is a mention of a private drive that ODOT has to approve, or a curb cut on, on the Broadway Extension Road and Access Road. That drive to the south of this property, I think I spoke last time, is privately owned drive by Mr. Deakle. We acquired that property, and we built that area, and it is not open to the public and not accessible for this site. So I don't think there's any way they're going to get ODOT approval for another curb cut on the Access Road. And they will not be able to use the one to the south of their property. So we just think there's a whole lot... I haven't seen the new spud document with the changes since last time. Obviously, I'd like to review the final document in final form with all the exhibits showing what this is going to look like, if you're inclined to approve it at all. My hope is that you find that it is a totally incompatible use with the industrial uses there and with the plan and existence there, and you deny this. Mr. Deakle is with me today, but I don't let him talk.
We'll be here for another hour.
Is there someone else who wanted to speak or not? Okay, Mr. Allen?
Well, I guess, you know, aside from item number two, that whether this is an appropriate use or not for this area, it is an entertainment venue that's going to be a wide range of events, be a basketball game for a, for a youth group, which we're not going to serve alcohol during any youth events. It could be a charity event for a church or private organization or anything like that. It's not an uncommon use. I mean, it's not tremendously different than going to Deakle auction on a Saturday afternoon and standing there just to see what's going on. So the use is, as compared to our neighbors, is not terribly different, I don't think. So I think, you know, really what it comes down to is two items. Is this an appropriate use for this area, and is the sign appropriate? I think the sign is appropriate. It's an entertainment venue that needs to be advertised. I don't mind scaling it down, lowering the level of the, of the electronic display, even lowering the height a little bit. But we're, we're within the guidelines of the appearance corridor. That's what we've been asked to do, and that's what we did. So...
The curb cut has already been approved by ODOT, and we will not get on Deakle's property at all in what we're doing. It's, it's on ODOT property where our cut off of that curb cut will come. It's already approved.
And it's, right, it's already been approved by ODOT. It's already been approved by the city of Oklahoma City. So I guess, aside from the sign, it's whether this is an appropriate land use for this area. We do have some drainage problems, but I don't think that's, this is the place to bring that up.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Allen's pretty much hit the nail on the head. Is it or is it not an appropriate use? This is an entertainment facility. I've, I've been to a Deakle auction or two, and while I found them somewhat entertaining, Mr. Deakle never offered me a drink. Here I'm...
Things with self-asking...
You may have been bidding then.
You may have bid.
Well, with a little more encouragement, perhaps, the bidding would have been higher. But that, that said, this is an entertainment venue. It, I think it's somewhat suspect from a use standpoint where, where it is. As far as the sign is concerned, I just can't support the sign.
Other discussion commissioners?
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Charlie and I spent two years looking for a place to build something like this. This will be something that the people of Oklahoma City will enjoy. It's not going to be a hockey tent. I'm not going to let people smoke in it. There's a big trend of, you know, smaller bands or older bands want to come in town to play, but they can't sell out the Ford Center. And the only places available to them are the stinky casinos. I hate going to casinos. That's why I'm building this place, because I'd still like to go to concerts where nice, older people can go and enjoy them and not have to walk through casinos, because I have no use for casinos.
Mike, you were going to say something?
Well, I mean, I guess, it seems like, I, I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know, where, where would you put this use if not in this sort of an area? I guess it would be, the follow-on question to you, Nick, is if, would you put it in an office complex? Would you put it in this type, just this type of venue? We see it down here, and there's, like, I'm thinking about the Bricktown Event Center, right? Which is in Bricktown, which is an entertainment district, but there's nothing really up north. You know, I think we'd have a far more significant protest and objection were this to be considered for an area that, there's no residential around here. There's no meaningful commercial in this area. It seems to me that if it's going to be this kind of venue, it, this may not be a bad place for it necessarily.
We looked for two years. I actually bought one piece of property out on I-44 that I still have, if anybody's interested. And Charlie came along and said, this won't work here. And we looked and looked and looked, and this is the, after two years, this is the piece of property we found. And because it was industrial, we thought there would be no real protests. As you said, there are no schools, no churches, and no residential around it. And this is the best we could find. I have this vision, and that's, this is the best I could find for, for this vision.
Now, that being said, is though, I do think that Mr. Shaded and Mr. Deakle raised some points with respect to screening to the property back to the west. I believe that's the west. Is that right, Mr. Shaded? With, with regard to a masonry or concrete panel fence, et cetera, so that, because I can see spill-over parking, et cetera, much as you consider moving back into... I'm assuming the parking lot, I see it on my aerial photo, is your, is that the Deakle parking lot? Just so I'm, I want to be clear. And I, I think it would be appropriate to screen that in a significant way to keep knock-on traffic, et cetera, than, I don't know how big the venue may be, but I, obviously, it's got a lot of parking. I mean, after we get past that, you know, I think, like I said, I just don't know where we would want a venue like this. I think the sign obviously needs some work. It's way too, it's out of scale with what's around there, et cetera. But I'm not, I'm not as troubled by the land use, because I don't think that, that this area would be a bad, necessarily a bad location for that particular use.
Let me, let me add to that. I was thinking in the same, the same terms about what the use is. Is it compatible? Well, to a certain extent, it's not. But to a certain extent, there are uses that you could use this facility for that wouldn't interfere with the neighbors. One of which is you make sure that there's no way that people can park on your neighbor to the west, and that's the wall. Second thing is the, the, when you said something about the drainage study, I want to know what that means. You're putting in a giant parking lot to the west of this proposed building. I don't know where the water goes. I don't know if it goes to your neighbor's face or whatever it is. I think there needs to be a drainage study before, before I would approve on with this. Also, you know, a rendering of what the wall would be, or what the, you know, what that screening would be. But fully agree with Nick. I won't approve, vote for approval of this, of this application with the sign that you propose with an EMD 30-foot pole sign stuck on an appearance corridor. Well, that's a, that's a, that's a non-game changer. I won't do it. And I don't think you need it.
We can sure negotiate on the sign.
Well, I'm not inclined to, look, I, I think your prop won't work. Quite frankly, I think that we spend too much time going, well, maybe 10, maybe 12, you know, negotiating these signs on the horseshoe. It's very frustrating to me, and I know it's frustrating to the people who have to attend these meetings and sit here and listen to sign conversations, quite frankly. I, I, I can't approve this sign either. I, I don't think it's appropriate there, even if we get past the land use issue.
Assuming we get past the land use, and one thing I'll say in addition to that, is compatibility cuts both ways. This is industrial land that is primarily used in certain hours of operation. This, the hours of operation here is going to be a high-volume hours other than what these other uses are, which is incompatible. As far as the sign is concerned, getting away from the compatibility issue, I would go with Bob and, and probably argue a sign is not even necessary. If this structure was built, it is going to be so dominant, right there on that curve, that, you know, you won't be able to miss it. And I'm assuming there will be some wall signage, certainly. And, you know, why would you need another sign?
At this point, I think the only thing that, that really, you know, we kind of worked out everything. I don't think we really addressed outdoors, events.
They're not going to do them, Lee. They're not going to do, okay. They're not going to do those.
Okay, I didn't sit in there. And then the other thing is the sign. And, you know, if you're, if you're going up Broadway Extension, then you're looking directly at that property before you make the curb. And that, I think, is what troubles us in terms of, of really questioning whether or not we should go forward with this. I think we've, you know, limited, you've... know, limited, you've agreed to the other things as it relates to, to, um, really to the TEs, that you've agreed to those. Um, that's, that's really the only thing that's, that's really keeping this from walking.
One thing I might add, is that as I sit here and listen to whether this is right, where it is, is this compatible, not right, is that I, I sit and think about where ISA Soccer Complex is at Reno and McCormick and what's around it. And if I had my magic wand and could pull up a map, that's completely industrial. It's DeLisi, Chickasaw Telecom, all these things around it. Now, full, well, I realize that it has three full-size indoor courts, a couple of small youth courts, which are all youth, serves beer. I think about, um, some softball parks, where they are at 240, Jim, your way, and all these things. And so, I, I'm having a lot of difficulty seeing the difference in a basketball court, in my opinion, and, and these things, that, these other, you know, items, other than they were there first, potentially. And so, it's not, I'm not disagreeing with anything you've stated. It's just, I don't see personally the, a major difference.
Well, the basketball court and people playing basketball is one thing. Late-night concerts, that's something else.
Agreed, except for the fact that ISA has soccer games that start after midnight.
And I don't think...
And not one, but three fields worth. That's a minimum of 11 men or women on each team times three. And I'm just, I'm not saying it's the same. It just seems to me that...
Carry, carry that on for a minute, Todd. We've got two teams playing and all their support people. Might have a couple hundred people. What's your capacity for a concert?
We're planning on 1,300.
The capacity's 1,300? I mean, if you squeeze...
There's the difference.
I mean, that's based on square footage?
No, I understand.
Okay. If we get 1,300 people in there, that'd be a wonderful day.
I understand. Well, and the multi-use of this facility, it is just, not only that, but, you know, there's wedding receptions and other kinds of things that really makes it function, you know? I, I, I just struggle with really the signage. You've already agreed with the appearance to, you know, do the tilt-ups and all of that, so it just...
How about we, um, just put signage on the wall and come back another day to talk to you about a sign if we want one?
I'm not sure coming back to talk about the sign later.
Well, you guys don't want us to have a sign. And if that's the only thing that's holding it up, then I don't have to have a sign, except on the, you know, on the outside of the building.
I'm, I'm inclined, after listening to the discussion, to be comfortable that this, these uses work actually counter-time-wise to the industrial activities around. They're giving up I-2, and if you think about what could go on this site as an I-2 use, and what that might look like as compared to what we're going to see here. Well, that's a...
To your point, there would be no obligation to provide any screening. Twenty-two industrial uses.
Outdoor storage of industrial...
Thirty-five foot metal building?
Huh?
Thirty-five foot tall metal building?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's outdoor storage.
Uh, or outdoor storage of...
Outdoor storage.
Big-time pipe yard.
Yeah.
Or whatever.
I think with, with the changes that we've talked about, no outdoor concerts and uses like that, and the absence of the sign, I think we've probably done the best...
Also, also, I think Mike had mentioned the screening as well.
I'd like to ask, I mean, if we're trying to avoid our patrons parking on Deco's property, I don't see how a fence or a wall or a landscaping between the two properties. They're, they're in the process today of expanding their parking lot east to the property line. Now, short of somebody in a four-wheel drive driving over the curb and it, you know, four-wheeling across there, I don't see how, uh, putting a fence up, any landscaping or wall is going to stop somebody from leaving our property or coming in on Northwest 114th Street and either parking in our parking lot or their parking lot. I don't see how a wall, a fence or landscaping changes that. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. We've got...
I'm not saying it's foolproof, right? I mean, nobody, it, it's not going to be 100%.
I mean, we've agreed to, well, excuse me, provide 20% more landscaping. We've got to put it somewhere. I mean, sure, we'll put a buffer, but to, to mandate a, a masonry wall or, or whatever, I don't, I don't see how that's going to address parking.
Well, if I'm a patron driving in and I see a wall, uh, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to know that at least if I go to the other lot, I'm really, I'm on the wrong piece of property, I mean, as opposed to not having, never mind.
I'm, I'm fine with the wall if you all think...
Mr. Shaddin wants to say something, so let's hear from him.
Thank you. I'll be brief. But, uh, the 20% increase in landscaping is wonderful. I think that just meets your corridor standard, so they're not really giving you anything there. They're meeting, I think, what the standard is that they should have met when they brought this last time. The fence we would like to have, it will sort of be the demarcation zone between properties. Will let people know not to park on our property. It will also keep their concert growers from wandering onto our property after the concert. It is a problem with land use, because you've got concerts, receptions, whatever, with alcohol. It's not just beer. It's hard liquor, as I understand it, that they're be allowed to serve. Uh, and we have heavy equipment that is really an attractive nuisance to young people. There is a moving company to the north of us that they could go, get into all type of various nefarious activities. So, it really is an incompatible use. Uh, and then you have an issue of, of these concert growers, bridal reception growers, late at night accessing the access road, which is a one-way street and potentially going the wrong way on the one-way street at night. Uh, that's just a real concern at this location, if you've driven this location. And I think all of you have. So, there are, we still object to the use. We do believe it's totally incompatible use. We were there first. All those businesses were there first. We bought our land knowing what the zoning was. If this use was allowed in this zoning, they wouldn't be here asking to rezone it to a single-use spot. Uh, and we understand the pitfalls of some of the I-uses, but I think you've built in since that, uh, ways to mitigate problems with some of those types of businesses through landscaping and site screening and, and your building code. So, uh, we do object stringently to this use and would, again, request that you deny the application. If you don't, aren't inclined to deny the application, then we certainly would like to see the final written version of what you're going to approve with the proper attachments and exhibits, so we can see what it is you're voting on. And we heard things they're willing to do, and they've given some more things today. None of that's in black and white as we sit here, and I'd like to see that.
Well, you can read it after the fact if we approve it. Uh, if we approve it, it's in the record.
I understand. It's in the minutes and...
We wouldn't have, we wouldn't come back and have another discussion about this.
No, I know. I understand that. But, but the problem is, from the public's perspective, we're here objecting to something. We're not quite sure what it's going to look like. You talked about some type of fence. I'd like to see what the fence is going to look like and know what it's going to be made out of. And it's something other than Woodstock A. So, I mean, those are just items that are important to my clients. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, with, um, with the concessions that have been made and the added TEs, with the screening, the elimination of the sign, um...
Elimination of any outdoor activities?
Any outdoor activities I'd move for adoption.
I think we ought to be clear on the screening, though. What, what, so you know, right? I mean, we're talking about the, you know, the, how you say this, the, the concrete panels? That, that's what I'm referring to. Say it, you...
Nice, Derek.
Yeah. Right, just so you're clear, right?
How tall are you expecting it to be?
Six to eight foot?
How tall would you want it to be?
Eight.
Eight five and a half?
Eight-foot masonry fence, concrete panels are acceptable.
I, I accept a friendly addition.
Yeah.
Clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, now, just to, so that my vote will be right, no sign is on this application. You're allowed to put whatever signs on the building.
On the building.
You did that. And that's in conformance with I-2 regulations, right?
Speak to, specifically speak to EMD.
That's, no, that's, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. You're going to put a sign on the building. Will it be an electronic message display sign?
Would you deny us if it is?
I don't think that's un, I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, even, even if you were over the front door, I mean, with, subject to the...
I did drive, I did drive.
The flashing, you know, but, you know?
And it's right there. It's just, you know, it's, it's in your face when you go to the curb.
That being said, though, it is an event place. There may be events that they want to argue and they shouldn't have to change the billboard.
I wouldn't object to an illuminated sign, you know, saying XYZ Event Center.
Exactly.
I don't want to see Bugs Bunny running across the railroad, clearly in front of the building, doing jumping jacks.
What about over, over the front?
Hey, Bob? I mean, no, you know...
What's the difference in this place than the Chesapeake Center downtown?
Exactly.
Oh, a lot.
What's the difference?
Chesapeake Center is an entertainment area.
We've got a huge sign on... And it jumps up and down and it flashes and nobody says anything about it. And you go across the street and look at the park over here, what they did over there.
The park? Yeah. But this is, this is on Broadway Extension, Appearance Corridor, and I think it's distracting. And I don't, you know, if you illuminate the sign, that's fine. But no EMD, no running... Now, you can announce the events.
You know, even the fence, I, you know, they've already agreed to put the fence in. But we didn't, we didn't, you know, we didn't make them put a fence around the Chesapeake Center. You know, that was the same thing.
No, I, I get, I get your point, but I don't mind if you change the EMD for, here's the events, you know, coming soon, X, Y, Z, that's it. But, but the, all of this...
A level two.
Fault or all?
Level two E...
All right, level two.
A level two display.
Look, I don't have a problem with the LED. I think it's appropriate right there. I think it's appropriate for what he wants to do with the building.
Yep.
In some, in some fashion, because I'm on my, he's, LED, level two.
Well, I mean, we'd like to roll video, to be honest.
Okay, here's my question.
Today's generation is video, high-def.
This has to come back with a specific plan. Is that right?
No.
No, I thought I read that. On what the elevation's going to be and everything.
No. Lee, Lee's got a motion out on the floor.
Right.
You want to...
Is there a second?
Well, can we, we also have the existing accessory, non-accessory sign of the billboard. Well, we can't, that can't go away.
Yeah, the billboard's got to...
Yeah, I wanted to go, well, we're, I thought we were... Amending TE2 to say, no non-accessory signs except the one existing.
Okay.
But now going to the EMD issue of a level two on the Broadway Extension on the stove?
Should be level one.
Okay.
That's what I would say.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Level one. Level one, you understand?
I do.
Okay.
Now, so it's clear, but also, is there a screening?
Yes, it's, it's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, and then no out, no outdoor concert?
Yes.
Yes.
All done. And that's your motion, Lee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second, amending TE2, adding TE4, eliminating outdoor performances or activities, and a sign on the building, it can be an EMD level one. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not over yet.
Item seven has been continued and item eight's been withdrawn. Item nine is SP473, application by Pogue Land Investment for a special permit of our mining and processing located at 1100 North Cimarron Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. Um, I can start with a bit of good news. We have no sign as part of our application, so we can avoid any discussion there. Um, as a, I guess, reminder or update for those who weren't here, two weeks ago, this item was before this commission. There was a series of TEs that we had agreed to. There was a vote made on the floor to approve, and the vote was four to two to approve. The lack of five votes meant that we had to come back. In the interim, we have revised our program description to incorporate all of those elements that were made TEs on the first go-round into our program description. That being limiting the hours to eight to five, Monday through Friday only, year-round, both winter and summer months, limited to five years. And additionally, putting right in what we will do to reestablish, that'd be Sprig with Bermuda. So, we did have another issue to address with Public Works, being the maintenance of Cimarron Road. And we do have an agreement that we are working on that's in place with Public Works, but it's in the form of a resolution that will have to go to council to grant our, my client, the, I guess, the right or privilege to maintain the road for the period in which he will be mining. So, I have handed out a series of exhibits, three of which I will have Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll explain to show. There was some, I think, discussion about how big is the ridge, what are you exactly cutting, what will be left. Um, I know in the past, this commission has had mining permits where somebody went out and just dug a big hole and left it. That's not what's going to happen here. We have a ridge. We will be cutting 12 feet from the ridge, but when we're done, there will still be a ridge. It will just be smaller, but there will still be fall on the property of approximately 2% grade. Um, so when we look at this site, I think it's important to look at what's immediately next door. And why I say that, there was a lot of discussion last time about the, the state of the roads and what will happen to the roads. One of the things that my client's facing is the fact that this property is designated as industrial. We could go develop this as industrial and move every bit of the dirt we're asking to move with this application and more, and we wouldn't have to get a special permit. And there wouldn't be an enforcement mechanism by which the city could require my client to fix Cimarron Road all the way to the highway. This provides the city and the residents a better-case scenario. When we look immediately to the west, you see Clarence Page Municipal Airport. Why is that significant? Well, that's why the comprehensive plan designates this as industrial. This has 100 airplanes that are housed here. And when you go look at the stat sheet from airnav.com, it has approximately 68 flights a day. One of the main selling points is it services two different types of jet fuel. The way the jet fuel gets to this airport is through large tanker trucks. So, there are large, massive trucks already using this street. But now, the city's got somebody they can tap and say, go fix it, there's potholes. Additionally... There was discussion about how are we going to make sure that people go north? Well, what we're willing to do is, one, we will only have one entrance. It'll be right here on the north end on Cimarron Road. We are going to have the road leaving the facility come like this and angle it with, with barricades where it's angled in a north-westerly direction. So, for any truck to try to go south, they would have to make a 135-degree turn on a two-lane road with bar ditches to go south. I don't think it will happen. We will put signage, no EMD, no Bugs Bunny, but we will put signage here saying, right turns only, you must go north. Now, is there a possibility that some truck driver just decides he is, you know, bent on going south? Sure. I don't think it's going to happen, but that's a possibility. We're going to do everything within our power to force trucks to go north from here to I-40. And again, my client will be responsible for maintaining for the period of a special permit from here all the way to I-40, which is in excess of what most applicants have to do, and my client's willing to do it. Typically, that would be, in our opinion, some form of exaction outside the boundaries of our site. We understand that we could have a negative impact, so we're willing to do that. When it comes to the other issues raised by protesters, being dust and erosion, we already have our DEQ permit. When it comes to the other issues raised by protesters, being dust and erosion, we already have our DEQ permit. We are, we will be required to have water trucks out there to make sure dust is controlled. We will be required to reestablish when this is done. So, DEQ will be watching us for erosion problems. We will have to meet the state requirements, and we will. So, with all that being said, this is truly a, a unique application in that the trigger of selling is what's causing us to be here. We could donate the dirt and do this. We could develop one five-acre site over the next twenty years and still take this dirt. The difference is, the city can now force my client, through a resolution, to maintain that road, which will serve as a benefit to the city and the people that live out there. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we ask for your approval. I do wanna point out that staff does recommend approval and only has the one TE, and that's related to the, the language of Public Works that we are working with, and it'll go to council.
Evan, you mentioned controlling dust, water truck, that sort of thing. Where's your client gonna get the water?
Jason Spencer with Crafton Toll. There's a, he does have a meter from Oklahoma, from City of Oklahoma City where he can get water, basically from the water system through a fire hydrant. Can do that to fill up the water trucks, and I believe that is your intent, his intent. So, that's his intent of, you know, using, basically, public water, paying the city for that to fill up the trucks.
But where are they gonna get it? How close?
There's a, a fire hydrant down on Tenth Street, so.
Tenth and?
Tenth. So, it's right adjacent to the property.
I'm sorry.
It's adjacent to the property on Tenth Street, just on the south side of his property, so Tenth and Cimarron.
So, there'll be constant trips down there and down Tenth Street to get water.
And let me add one other thing on that. We're, we're willing, in addition to north to I forty, to take charge and fix any problems on Cimarron to Tenth and from Cimarron East along Tenth as it's abutting our property.
Well, I'm trying to figure out how this big water truck's gonna make this one-hundred-and-thirty-five-degree turn you were talking about to get down to Tenth Street, get his water.
That, I don't know. That. I mean, we might have to have some additional access point for that, but none of the dump trucks.
And the other question is, when we talk about dump trucks hauling dirt, what size trucks are we talking about? Are we talking about the conventional dump truck that hauls maybe fourteen, fifteen yards of dirt, or are we talking about the big semis that haul four times that?
It could be a mix of, of either. And on the, the water, I mean, there's also a pond on his property. He can also drill a well out there, and he does have the ability to run a line under the road and be able to access the fire hydrant through a hose from his property without actually driving trucks down there, where the trucks would be, would stay on the property as well.
Um, why I ask about the size of the trucks, I would envision, as a commercial operation, it would be probably the larger trucks. But you use a conventional dump truck, you're talking about seven-hundred thousand yards of dirt. That's about fifty thousand trips, about ten thousand trips over a year, over your five-year.
And that would be dependent on, you know, the size of the truck. It would be dependent on the, you know, who comes to him buying dirt, how much dirt they're gonna need, and what, who they're using to move that, so.
Other protesters?
Yes. Okay, a number of people have signed up to speak. In light of that, I'm gonna ask that if the people who speak before you raise an issue, please don't raise the same issue again. If you have something new to address, we'd like to hear that. So, with that, Tammy Sue Fisher is the first name I have. Sure, we'll wave that. Catherine Dawson. If you would please give us your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Catherine Dawson. My address is five-zero-five North Cimarron Road.
Thank you.
I live approximately half a mile south of the proposed site. I was here two weeks ago, and two weeks ago, I chose not to speak. I came here simply to support my neighbors. As I sat here, I was so taken by the words of my neighbors, and I could not help but think about Luke, where in part it says, "The mouth speaks the overflow of the heart." And it moved me so much that I felt like I have to speak for my neighbors. And I also wanna say that I'm a blonde and I'm a senior, so if it's baseball, I'd be out after one more strike. But I'm not an idiot, and I keep thinking, seven-hundred thousand, seven-hundred thousand cubic yards. And I kept sitting back there scratching my head going, what's a cubic yard? I know I remember that in school. What was it? What was it? All I could think of was the water bill that tells me that on Big Junk Day, I can put out three cubic yards, which is equivalent to three washing machines. So, my poor little brain's going, seven-hundred thousand cubic yards. What's this gonna look like? And to speak to Mr. Gales, you've mentioned you had been a trucker and understood trucker. I was raised by a wonderful trucker. Twenty-five years he drove for TransCon. I have much empathy and love for truckers, and I think for the most part, they try to do what is right. But I also think that a trucker has to think about every single day, how many loads can I carry? Because the number of loads I can move is the number of paychecks I'm gonna make. And frankly, they're gonna have to go from point A to point B. So, I called an uncle who has a dump truck, and I had to get some figures in my head so that I could think about this. So, what it boiled down to me was, if there's seven-hundred thousand cubic yards, and his dump truck is ten yards, and you asked that question, and I asked, what's the average dump truck that I see going up and down Cimarron Road every day? And there are about ten-yard dump trucks. Well, that's seventy thousand loads over the course of five years, five days a week, nine hours a day. And if I take that and break it all the way down, that means fifty-three loads of dirt, fifty-three loads of dirt. Now, what my heart says is, okay, you've got to think about this practically, and I understand Mr. Pogue's position, I understand, I understand his investment, but I need to think about the investment that we made, the residents who moved out there. I was a little city girl who ran around the playground, clapping my hip, pretending I was on a horse. And one day, I was gonna live out there, and I was forty-five years old when I moved there, and I got a horse. And I used to ride those roads up and down, up and down, and I was so happy. But I understand progress. I can't ride my horse there anymore because there's already too much traffic, but what is it gonna be like? And when I really crunch the numbers all the way down, gentlemen and lady, if you take nine hours a day, five days a week, and you divide it into that many loads, we are talking six loads per hour. That's one truck load every ten minutes. But that's not the entirety of it. One truck load requires a road in to load and a road out to deliver. So, it's virtually, it could in essence be a hundred-and-eight trucks up and down the road every single day. And while I admire them for trying to find a way to keep it going north, as I said, these truckers are gonna take the route that's gonna get them there the fastest, even if it just means coming in from the south. I do believe that it's going to impact my route, but I'm not here to speak for me and what it's gonna do to my house and the bridge right beside my driveway and my creek that runs between my house and my barn that already floods because of the silt that has now moved into Shell Creek. I literally get flooded with the tiniest bit of rain. Right now, I would pray to get just a little bit of flood. But in reality, this is a lot of dirt. There's gotta be some silt. But when it comes right down to it, I'm here to ask you that when you punch that button, you punch the red one, because you are talking about people who have invested their money, their lives, their dreams. And their dreams are, are sitting there, and from this point forward, are we really, really going to let an industrial site do what these people look at every day? I drove home from here the other day. On my way home, I am not kidding you, in this beautiful green wheat field stood twelve deer. And I stopped, as I always do after twenty years of living there, and I stopped just so I could look at the deers. And I see turkeys, and I can't imagine not seeing those things anymore. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Monty Fairchild? If you'd give us your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I don't hear very well, so my name's Monty Fairchild, and I live at fifteen thousand three hundred Northwest Tenth, which is directly south of the, the operation that's planned. You know, at this point, I, from what I've understood, talking to most people, this project's pretty well done. I just wanted to express my concern. I'm against the project for a number of reasons. It does nothing to enhance our neighborhood. It's very calm, a lot of wildlife, deer, turkey, everything, and that's, I think a lot of that's gonna disappear. My other concern is the blowing dust, and I know they're gonna address that, but, but about two months ago, they were working on the land with, I guess, with a dozer. It's probably quarter of a mile north of my house, and there was just a cloud of red dirt coming between my house and my neighbor's house. And I mean, it's, and not just a little dust, a lot of dust. And so, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that will be addressed very strongly because of the allergy problems I have with the granddaughter that lives with us and other things. Another concern is the traffic. They built an Aldi store three miles directly east of us about a year ago, year and a half ago. And trucks were coming from a dirt operation on Highway sixty-six between Yukon and Banner, and it was one truck after another for two months. And, and I talked to a, a state trooper that was working Cimarron Road because of the trucks, because of the complaints on the trucks. And, and it wasn't just one trooper. There was two troopers, and they were out there constantly stopping traffic and trucks primarily to, to slow them down. So, that's, if, if anybody is aware of all driving down the interstate with these, with these haulers, you know they drive fast. They get paid by the load. And that's, that's a big concern with me with five grandchildren living on, on our house, riding bicycles and, and playing. They're not in the street, but it's still a concern. But, and, and I know that they're doing everything they can to prevent traffic from going east on Tenth Street or south on Cimarron Road. But I know good and well, if there's a project that a construction company has east of us or south of us, or in Mustang or in South Yukon, there's gonna be trucks going east on Tenth Street and south on Cimarron Road. I don't think there's any way to prevent that, but, but it's a concern. It's a quiet neighborhood. We love it out there, and, and this, like I said, this project does nothing to enhance our area, and that, that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Jamie Brown? Mr. Who?
Stewart.
Mr. Stewart, come up.
I do swear. My name is Jack Stewart, and I live in Yukon at four-oh-five Meadow Run Court. And the reason I've come up today is because I am the county commissioner for, one of the county commissioners in Canadian County, and this area out here is in my district. But, I think it rocked my eyes. Anyway, I was made aware of the issue just yesterday evening about the possible mining out of seven-hundred thousand cubic yards of dirt. You know, some of the stuff I'm gonna try to not double up on like you've asked us not to do. But I became aware of the problem, and as Ms. Dawson was talking about the, the truck volumes, it does, I, I calculated it out, averaged on ten cubic yards loads, and it would take one load out of there every ten minutes for five solid years on five working days of the week. So, that is just a tremendous amount of traffic, of heavy truck traffic. And as far as the fuel tankers going in, I'm sure they probably wait, most likely, probably in the same ballpark, I would guess. But I doubt that there's gonna be one fuel truck, loaded fuel truck going into the airport every ten minutes, as this will, to, to be able to accomplish this seven-hundred thousand yards. He can't hear and I can't see, so here we go. It's, the, the property is immediately adjacent to Shell Creek Watershed, and Shell Creek is a major tributary that goes just a few more miles north. It goes directly into the North Canadian River. As y'all are well aware, being Oklahoma City, the North Canadian is the river that feeds from Canton into the Oklahoma City Water Spat at Canton, or I mean, at Overholster. So, there's gonna have to be a tremendous amount of effort, and I appreciate y'all's plan on that, to keep the silt from eventually getting into Shell Creek, which would wash on into the North Canadian. And I've also heard, just as of yesterday and this morning, or this afternoon, Mr. Pogue's offer to maintain Cimarron Road from the property to the interstate, and that would amount to approximately one mile. And the only question I would have along that regard is to what degree and what standard would that maintenance occur? I have seen too many times that once you get past this stage and on down the road, that maintenance can, if there's a pothole developed, throw shovel full of gravel in it. And I don't know, not really questioning them, but just questioning the process of what can occur typically on these sorts of situations. And then it's like, where do we fill it when it's just a, you know, a pothole size of a saucer, or do we wait till it gets the size of a car and a, you know, even a small car getting inside of it? So, that's a concern, is, is the, the standard that will be required of the maintenance of that street, because these citizens will have to go past that every day to get to their homes, and they're not gonna be wanting to dodge potholes and the ruts that will be left. The road out there now, I obviously have not had enough time in, in less than twenty-four hours to take a core on it, but it appears to be a mid-sized, thin to mid, mid-sized asphalt road with either a chip sill or a story sill on. It's fairly good shape right now, but by the same token, it's carrying, you know, regular car traffic and like pickups, other than a fuel truck here and there. I won't go back on to the major traffic, other than to say, have there been any traffic impact studies done that would indicate the number of expected accidents, injuries, and even possible fatalities? It's also been mentioned already about the environment numerous times, but I'm curious if you guys would require an environmental impact study that would take everything into consideration, not only just the dust that would be created from this, but the noise, the, the silt, the four-oh-four permit, if this water is eventually gonna get into the North Canadian River from the Corps of Engineers, the land degradation. And even if there's this many trucks, one going out of there every ten minutes, they've gotta be loaded, and so there's gonna be a lot of diesel fuel. And if you get this wind out of the north, it's gonna be throwing the, the fumes and everything back toward these houses that are not that far away. They're just across the street. And even actually, some of them, I think, are just immediately east of this. So, my recommendation is, if should this thing go forward, as far as the, and I, obviously, I've not seen you guys, dust control plan, whatever, what's that called, you know, but anyway. I would ask that it would be maybe done in, in small portions and not take this whole entire hundred-and-twenty acres at the same time. If you, if that vegetation, even if there's silt fence, silt lines around the deal, the wind gets up out of the north, and that hundred-and-twenty acres is exposed, it's gonna be dust bowl number two to these neighbors that we're talking about. I think anything else I've got would probably be repeating, so I won't move forward and say that I want to understand that the goal here is not to demonize Mr. Pogue. I've not met him. I do not know him, but he sounds like a very entrepreneurial businessman, and we can appreciate that for what it will do for the economy with, you know, possibilities that would happen. But the, the tail end of this venture, though, has great potential to wreak havoc on the. neighbors that are both in Oklahoma City, you guys, and in Canadian County, that are my guys. These roads will be destroyed, they're safety impaired, they're peace and quiet disturbed, possibly drinking water supply polluted and countryside disheveled. And I'm hoping to say that these are not just sky, the sky is falling, puffed up, overly dramatic concerns. I think they are legitimate possibilities with a lot of questions that beg answers, and they cannot be answered overnight. So today, I would ask that you would deny this permit request until there's a clear plan of action addressing these potential pitfalls. And with that, I stand concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Again, if you'll limit your comments to things we've not already heard.
Okay. I'm Jamie Brown, and I live at one five zero zero one Northwest Tenth Street. Our property, we own the forty acres adjacent to the property in question. And so we have a lot of concerns with everything that's going to be going on. Many have already been addressed. The one that I want to address regarding the water, the pond that he's speaking of is primarily on our property. And it's, it's not full all the time already. I mean, if we have it go a little bit of time without any rain, it, it dries up. I have two kids, nine years old and eleven years old. We just moved out on the property and built a home, moved in in December. My kids are so excited to live there and to run around in those woods. The majority of our property is woods and ponds and hunting and chasing animals, and they love being there. And I'm worried about what this is going to do to their backyard. I mean, the whole reason we moved there was for the boys, to be able to have a place to run around and explore and have fun. Another thing that I don't think has been addressed is, my husband sent this to me. It says, "Special permits like this have to meet several criteria, one of which is to not adversely affect the use of the surrounding areas." And this project does not meet that criteria. And we ask for you to please vote it down, deny any application for them to tear up this land. Thank you.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown, there's a question for you.
To be clear, your property is the forty acres to the east of this.
Yes, sir.
So the creek and the woods you refer to is between, part of that's on your property, part of that's on, on the subject property.
Right. The majority on ours.
Okay. Thank you.
Warren Lowe?
Good afternoon. My name is Warren Lowe, and I'm an orthopedic surgeon at McBride Hospital. And I felt it important enough for me to be here today to leave my patients who are probably getting pretty antsy right now, wondering where I am. But I've lived on five oh eight North Someron Road for thirty years. My wife and I have raised five children, well, mainly, my wife has raised five children while we've lived there. And certainly, we consider it our home. I think that a lot more people would be here, but the people in our neighborhood have to work for a living. And these meetings have been postponed so many times, and I've tried to take off work several times, but they keep getting postponed. It's pretty hard to interrupt your surgery schedule, your patients to just drop everything and show up. Anyway, last night, I sat down, just to put in words why I oppose Mr. Pogue's project. I have not met him, I don't know him, I've heard he's a nice guy, most Oklahomans are. And I don't doubt that. But I'm a simple person, I guess I watch Bill O'Reilly too much, but I am just a simple man. And I said, you know, basically, I oppose it because this project will lower property values of the people who have invested everything they have into the area, and it will create an ecological disaster. And I don't use that term lightly, and I'll tell you why in a minute. More than fifty years ago, hardworking Oklahomans moved out into the country to create a neighborhood where they could build a home, raise their children, enjoy God's creation, and invest their savings into the land so they would have something to leave their children. They supported their community, paid their taxes, went to church, voted, and educated their children. Now, a millionaire businessman, someone from outside their community, wants to come into their neighborhood and strip the land of its God-given riches and sell what can never be replaced or restored, all the while asking the city and county to subsidize his operation through street maintenance and repair, and asking his new neighbors to allow him to profit while devaluing their property. To allow one person to profit at the expense of an entire neighborhood is not the American way or the Oklahoma way. We have progressed beyond the age of the great robber barons who've used their wealth, power, and connections to build their fortunes at the expense of those who are less powerful and less influential. We have only to look to the virgin forests of the great northwest, which were clear-cut by profit-driven logging companies without regard to the land or to future generations to see the results of this behavior. Many states have laws preventing strip mining to preserve the environment, states that have learned the hard way, like Wyoming and West Virginia. While the Oklahoma Department of Wildlife Management promotes the planting of native grasses to prevent erosion and flooding and to preserve animal habitat, this strip mining project is an environmental catastrophe. With our dust bowl history and our current drought in mind, do we really want to compound our problems with this folly? Surely, we can do better. If this project goes forward, those of us who actually live in the neighborhood can say goodbye to the deer, the hawks, the woodpeckers that we enjoy seeing on the land. I wonder if the EPA knows of any endangered species in the area. Will Rogers was fond of saying, "Buy land, they ain't making any more of this stuff." If so, why are we willing to turn beautiful, productive land into an ugly, barren scar, never to be restored, all so one wealthy man can become wealthier? I asked the members of the commission, "Would you buy land and build your home where you have to drive by a strip mining operation while dodging dump trucks and earthmoving equipment on a road covered with potholes?" I think I probably know the answer. Is this the place where you would build your dream home? When the land is stripped and barren, and it will no longer grow crops or trees, and the water runoff floods onto the streets, runs into the creek, and contaminates the water table, what value will it have? And who will want to live near this scarred wasteland? Who of you would invest in land nearby this property? Franklin Delano Roosevelt, our only four-term president, said, "A nation that destroys its soils destroys itself." If you think I'm exaggerating the consequences of strip mining away the soil, do as I did this morning, and drive north on the Kilpatrick, excuse me, on the Kilpatrick Turnpike, and just go from I forty to Wilshire Boulevard. As you pass through Yukon and up Thirty-Ninth Street, you'll see many new housing additions growing up. The land is being productive. Until you come to an area that has recently been strip mined and the excavated land is filled with stagnant water, a minefield for young children, drownings waiting to happen, stagnant water to breed mosquitoes that carry West Nile virus and meningitis. On the east side of the Turnpike are vast farmlands that have been scraped bare. What you don't see on your drive are homes, neighborhoods, and children playing. Government was created to protect the small against the rich and powerful. I appeal to your sense of justice and ask that you vote for the people and against this ill-conceived disaster. Thank you.
I have a question. Are you, do you live on Someron Road?
I am.
And do you go from your house to I forty and come to town? How many times do you encounter a fuel tanker truck that's going into Clarence Page Airport?
I used to fly at C E Page Airport. That's where I learned to fly, and I would go over there and practice. And I have never seen a fuel truck.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, sir. There's no one else signed up to speak, commissioners?
Questions? That I'm not, not clear on. I believe there was a statement made that the hill is thirty-five feet. That, is that what you said, Jason?
That hill sits approximately thirty feet above Northwest Tenth Street, if you're looking north from Northwest Tenth Street.
What I was trying to reconcile is, I was given some elevations for this property of twelve ninety-eight to thirteen fifty-two, I believe. Where is that twelve ninety-eight taken from?
That would be the southeast corner.
South corner?
Yes.
Down in the creek?
Down close to the creek, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought, okay. The other question I have is for staff. There was a, I believe, a statement made that this is industrial land, and our staff report shows it as AA.
That it's zoned agricultural, it's designated for industrial development in the current comp plan.
Well, the comp plan, sure.
But to develop it industrially, it would have to be rezoned.
But yeah, it'd have to be rezoned to be industrial. Thank you.
And the point we're trying to make with that is, if we came in with a zoning application that was industrial, staff would fight us because its proximity to the airport would mandate that this is appropriate for industrial land. So that's the point we're trying to make. I think it's important to remember, this commission says on a, on a routine basis, when neighbors come up and protest because of wildlife or views or things that are happening on property that they love that are not their pieces of property, you don't own the view, you don't own those parcels of property. And we understand that there might be deer, and there might be hawks, and all these other things. And when this is done, it will be re-vegetated, and it could be wheat fields again, that all those same wildlife would come. But we believe what we're asking for is appropriate. The State Department of Mines has our application, and once my client posts the bond, our permit will issue. DEQ has reviewed this. From an environmental standpoint, they have no problems, they've issued the permit. This is something that is routine, it happens all over this city. And if we came in with an application to develop and move this amount of dirt or more, that wouldn't even be something that was addressed. It wouldn't be a special permit needed, it would just be moving dirt as a consequence of development. So we do think that the fact that we are phasing it, and it will be purchased by people when they're in need, it won't be a constant operation. It'll be, at that moment in time, when, when it's in need, they will sell it. We think our efforts to make sure that all of the public roads are maintained is something that's a benefit to the city. Now, the commissioner that was here, that spoke about the problems with the potholes, I would think the county would also like the fact that my client will be the one taking control and responsibility for fixing the road. I think it's important to also look back, last, two weeks ago, it was a four to two vote to approve this. The only thing that has changed about this application is we did exactly what we said we were going to do. We revised our program description to make sure that all of these commitments are in writing, that the city has teeth to enforce against us. The merits of the case are the same, and that was four to two. We would ask you to agree with staff and recommend approval of this application.
Chairman, may I make a few comments? Because I was one of the people that voted no. And in the subsequent two weeks, there was one afternoon, I was in some remote place, and I got behind two dump trucks. They were full of stuff with dirt flowing in my, I mean, and they were bouncing up and down, noisy, et cetera. So I thought, well, I was behind two dump trucks, now I know what's going to go on on Someron Road. But, but my objection to this application last week is beyond that reason, is even more confirmed in discussions that I've had with the applicant's counsel, who emphasized that this is industrial. And Nick, you just brought it up, it's not. It's agricultural. The industrial designation is on the map that we get with our packet, and it's in green over there, because for some reason, the two thousand Oklahoma City plan said that will be industrial. Not today, not under the new plan that's going to be adopted within a few months. The Oklahoma City plan absolutely designates this as being agricultural preserve, meaning, leave it alone. You don't do that. And what we're seeing here, with the example of the protesters and the analysis, thank you, of the number of trucks per minute potential that could come out with full loads, not just the trucks, they're coming in and going out. There's bulldozers, there's road graders, there's spewing diesel fuel, et cetera, and taking off seven hundred cubic, seven hundred thousand cubic feet of dirt over and over and over on two-lane asphalt roads. If they came in for an industrial application, we wouldn't approve it because the infrastructure doesn't handle the type of trucks, particularly Nick, an eighteen-hewter that comes in, it's not going to handle that. As to the issue about fuel trucks, you heard a fellow that was, lived there for thirty years, never seen one. And he goes to work, you know, so, you know, maybe once a month, a fuel truck comes in to fill up a gas tank. That's disingenuous. The silt to the North Canadian River, I'm convinced by the protesters that, and what their concern is about that, maintenance of the road, and it is a strip mine. It's a, it's a very intensive, big-use, giant industrial operation in a place that the Oklahoma City plan to come, is designated as agricultural preserve, and you just don't introduce that kind of activity affecting the lives of these people that live out there. We've always tried to protect them, always tried to, their lifestyle. And I think in this case, this is one of those that is just, is absolutely, totally inappropriate, and I oppose it.
If I could address one thing, I think to characterize anything I've said as disingenuous is unfair and untrue. What I said was, is the airport serves jet fuel. I think it's obvious that to serve jet fuel, tanker trucks get there. The testimony of one person saying he's never seen it, I don't think establishes that I was disingenuous in my argument. So I do, I take offense to that. Our point is, what we're asking to do can be done. And if we were going to develop these in five-acre residential tracks, we wouldn't be here talking about it. We could just do it. So when it's developed, this will be done. But now you have an opportunity to have somebody that will have to pay for the improvement of the road.
David, can I ask, I'm confused. I keep hearing, yes, you can do five-acre tracks. If you wanted to do five-acre tracks, we wouldn't be here, you'd be out doing five-acre tracks, and you'd be hauling dirt. Okay? I understand that. But this application looks to me like a, just a heads-up commercial mining operation. Typically, when we see these, we see much more detail, we see...
It'd be phased work.
Which phase we're working on, we see mediation plans, we see all those things. None of that is here. This just looks like I want to strip it off as much and as fast as I can, and it's a commercial deal. And I understand that under regular developments, you could start developing today and haul dirt off of it. But this application just doesn't look like either complete or appropriate. But this application just doesn't look like either complete or appropriate.
You've got a phased plan, your staff report. We have submitted a plan and it goes in phases. It's not all at once. Staff has it. I'll let Jason address it.
We've discussed it in the narrative too, upon how we're going to phase it, how the reclamation for each phase upon completion is going to take place, springing with Bermuda. Discussed protections from the creek and meeting the requirements of the special permit application that were listed in the city's ordinance. I mean, I feel like we've got a complete plan. We've submitted that to the State Department of Mines and are making sure that we're hitting all their criteria too, to protect the creek, to do what we're supposed to do. There's a lot of oversight on this from the State Department of Mines, ODQ, and the city itself. And so I think, you know, the concern from an environmental standpoint, if we don't do, you know, what is necessary to protect the creek, to control the dust and those kinds of things, then those organizations will shut down the operation and, you know, we won't be able to continue.
Ms. Fisher, you want to come up now?
I'm Tommy Sue Fisher, 1-5240, Northwest 10th. We're just directly across from this and part of this is just personal, but I just felt it's important to share that. We've been out there since the 60s and raised our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandbabies. And my husband has had a stroke just a year ago. I had a heart attack about four years ago. And we're very aware that five years down the pike, while all this is going on, we're not real sure where we will be just personally, you know, physically. And so it's a real concern to us about what if we had to sell, you know, the land that we've lived on? We just have an acreage. But, you know, it's just very much a concern to us because that's part of our estate, you know, and why we moved out there. The other thing is when the oil wells really started booming and there was an oil well out there and the robberies increased quite a bit, we were robbed twice. And it was from people on the oil well. There was a shooting out there. And it's inconceivable to me that with a lot of the goings and the truckers and, we were in the cattle business, so I love the truckers. They were wonderful. But nonetheless, it will be amazing if it does not enter a criminal, however you want to put that. But I just wanted to present that before you because it did make a difference when we were having that kind of traffic out there.
Thank you very much. Something quickly?
Very quickly. I just wanted to respond to one point. We've already calculated how long it's going to take to move this dirt and they've applied for a five-year permit.
You need to turn around and talk to us, please.
They've applied for a five-year permit and I guess counsel has just stated that they're not going to sell all the dirt all at once. They'll just sell it as they have a market for it. There's no way that this can be completed in five years. They would have to work day and night for five years to even move the dirt. And if they're just going to move it when they have a market for it, this is going to be an ongoing, commercial operation that's going to last for decades, not five years.
Not necessarily at all. What they're asking for, as I understand it, is maximum removal of that amount of dirt. We've limited their term to no more than five years and they'll be able to remove, assuming we approve it, which obviously has not happened. But if it functions as they say it will, and it will, they'll only sell dirt when they can sell dirt, which wouldn't be a load every 10 minutes for five years because there's not that kind of demand. But at the end of five years, they may have removed a fraction of that. That doesn't mean they'll get a five-year extension by any means.
But probably if they have an ongoing operation.
Maybe, maybe not because you don't know what will happen around there between now and five years from now. And they may get to a point where five years from now, it would be very attractive to them to develop these as five-acre residential sites. So we can't predict the future.
I've heard, again, I guess it's counsel, he seems to be like an attorney, that he wasn't misrepresenting when he said it was already zoned as industrial use, but that's sure what it sounds like to a novice like myself that he was saying it. If it's agricultural, we would all vote for them to do five-acre buildings. They would have no opposition today. But that's not what they're talking about and I think we all know that.
Yeah, they're asking us to allow a change. We understand that. Commissioners?
We need to vote.
I know, we've heard it all.
This has been on for seven times. It's not fair to the applicant, the folks that have come, so we need to move this along. That's my only view. I'm not sure if I'm for or against. I do have a thought that if Mr. Poe chooses to take 30 feet of dirt off his property starting tonight, he can commence his operation. And he can find a place to put the dirt, locate it in a different location, and start scraping and scrape dusk 24/7, 365, if he chooses. And there's nothing that says that he can't give the dirt away and have the trucks running up and down the road at the same time? Haul it to a different location and have it picked up from there? Due respect, not that that's commercially feasible, can't say, but it may be. So, you know, I'm torn between that reality and as an agricultural use, quite frankly, we see people scrape dirt all the time to get it ready to plant, to do other things with it. And there's nothing at all that anybody can do if Mr. Poe chooses to engage merely to get the land ready to till. It's a farming use. He's got a 30-foot grade, he wants to get to field level so he can plant and weed, pick a crop. So, I mean, that's a reality. I'm not saying it's a good idea or a commercial idea, but it is a fact.
And I understand that and have, you know, significant doubts if that's ever going to occur. So I would take that risk. And I look at the application in the four corners of what it's described to be. And because of that, and listening to the people who live out there, and my, you know, position last time has not changed, and once again, I'll vote to deny the application. I move to deny the application.
Is there a second?
All seconds, so we vote.
Gentlemen, get ready to vote. We have a motion and a second to deny the application. Cast your votes. And it is denied.
Item 10 is PUD 1573, application by Block 1 Communities, three-zone 10-400, northeast
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is an 80-acre tract that is immediately east of a 74-acre tract that we've done a, we also did a PUD 1548 on. This PUD is identical, basically, to what we had submitted on PUD 1548, continuation of a 30,000 rural zone property with the anticipation of Edmund Water being provided here. Oklahoma City has entered into an agreement with City of Edmund and all those pieces are falling into play. The city staff has been working on ordinances to apply the varying water bills from Edmund Water and that'll be going to Water Trust and Council soon. The development on the west has been cleared and plans are in for final approval. So this is an ongoing development mode that's out there for this type and size of home. And we've looked at the city staff report. Three of the TEs are relative to the water issue that we've talked about, same TEs that we had in the previous PUD. Items six and seven are a little strange that they seem to be items that maybe should be in the final, or in the plat. But we have marked the entrance onto 150th Street and made staff aware of that. And item seven talks about sidewalks on 150th Street. And if you'll recall, because of the conditions along 150th, the sidewalks were waived on the previous application because of the deep bar ditches there. It was, it's practically impossible to, because of the slope going all the way to the property line, to get a sidewalk in there for the majority of that distance.
What happens if you don't get Edmund Water? Is there any chance that that's not going to happen?
Well, there's always a chance.
That's wrong, Michael. TE 2, the last sentence of TE 2 says, "If agreement cannot be reached, each lot would be served with a private well." Well, now we're going back to private wells. What are we doing for sewer, Tim?
It'll be aerobic.
We're doing aerobic systems on 30,000 square feet.
Well, we wouldn't be able to do that. We would have to come back. With the zoning the way it is, it allows us to go bigger than 30,000. 30,000 is the smallest lot. So what you see is an image up there as a preliminary plat would be changed to meet that criteria. Same on the, that's the same agreement we made on 1548. We would have to come back into a minimum one-acre lot.
So, Tim, what'd you do on 1548?
Coming back to these semi-urban densities on septic systems that are suspect, and in this case, maybe Edmund Water, maybe a water well.
Tim, did you put, is that well in septic on 1548? Is that how it ended up?
Yes, sir. No, no, no. We didn't build it that way. No, it's under construction and it's anticipated and designed to tie onto Edmund. I thought you were asking if I put that language in the plat.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. That was, you answered my question with your second statement, okay?
What is, I don't understand item five. Direct service from Edmund, the City of Edmund will not be permitted? What are we talking about?
The way we've designed this is there'll be a master meter so that Oklahoma City pays Edmund and then Oklahoma City bills the city customers. What they didn't, what the city staff does not want is Edmund billing city residences. That's what TE 5 means. And we agree to that.
Okay.
So our design includes an Edmund master meter on 150th Street that Oklahoma City will connect to and then we're running the border mains along 150th and Post, just like we would anywhere else in Oklahoma City. So at such time when Oklahoma City's infrastructure reaches this point, it'll connect and all these lines will be Oklahoma City's and the master meter will go away.
So if, could we approve this with a stipulation, if you don't get Edmund Water, you'll come back to us?
The PUD's pretty much written that way. I mean, the zoning would still apply, the zoning still allows for one-acre lots and we'd come back with a, in a few weeks, you'll see the preliminary plat as you did on PUD 1548. And if we have to, if the Edmund deal falls through, then we'll come back with a revised preliminary plat showing larger lots.
Oh, Tim, I'm confused.
Yeah, me too. Let's go back. The zoning allows for one-acre lots. How many square feet in an acre?
No. What the plat allows for is a lot no smaller than 30,000 square feet.
Which is?
But is based on having potable water, public water. And that covers two areas, one's fire protection and one's potable water. The zoning will allow us to have larger lots, which would be a requirement if we do not get Edmund Water. Just by the sheer nature of a water well and a septic system, you have to have a minimum of one acre. So basically, it would change our minimum.
But if you've got potable water, you can be on a septic system on 30,000 square feet.
Exactly.
Exactly. Technically, from DEQ's perspective, we can go to half acre.
Yeah.
But we've made it 30,000 feet. It's not unlike what we've done in other developments.
I see a change coming, but not today.
And that's where I've always had a problem with our, or with my definition and DEQ. Half acres, septic system is suspect at best. Not saying it can't be done.
Mr. Allen would agree. Half acre, half acre lot with a septic system is not something you prefer, correct?
Well, no, no, I wouldn't have a problem with that, you know, as long as DEQ would approve it.
Okay. I misunderstood something.
No, I've even built houses that way, where I've had city water and provided a septic system. I mean, if it's a regular septic system, of course, number one, you got to perk, you know? And if not, if it doesn't perk, then you have to put in an aerobic system of some kind.
And the homeowners, in this case, would have the option to go either way, whatever the land would allow. But aerobic systems are more of the state-of-the-art systems that are being utilized more frequently than standard anaerobic systems, even though there's a little bit of a cost to maintain them.
Yeah, I've actually got one out west.
But there's a couple of things that we're having a problem with, with aerobic systems, and you probably well know this, is if they're maintained, they are fantastic. But if they're not, if they're not maintained, they cause all kinds of problems.
I agree.
And there's nothing that says that has to be maintained. And just like I've said in this meeting before, you know, I live in a subdivision that has regular septic systems. My next door, well, not next door, the next-door neighbor to the, to the east of me, we were talking about bills. And he said, "When do we ever get a water and a septic bill?" I said, "We're on public, I mean, we're on private wells and septic systems." He says, "What is that?" He didn't even know that he had a private well and a septic system. I mean, he's lived there for three years. People don't really realize that.
We do have two people signed up.
Question for Tim, or maybe staff. We did the neighboring PUD 1548 and this was an open 80-acre. Now we're doing this one and it butts up to the property to the east. And I guess my question is, is there a compatibility issue there?
It appears the lots are nearly the same size. Oh, to the east, the five-acre tracks.
I think he's referring to the east, JJ.
To the east, they look like they're five-acre tracks to me, but, you know, these things are never to scale.
Yeah, those are double A standard five-acre tracks.
And there's a roadway between our property and the lots on the other side.
Thank you. Okay, we do have two people signed up. Mr. Finley, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Ryan Finley, 14-800 Happy Valley Drive. I am, if you look at that map, I'm the third lot down from 150th going south. As you can see, there is a runoff creek that goes through my property, off of that property that's proposed right now. And I've lived there 15 years. And I've watched that creek probably grow threefold in 15 years. And my biggest concern, and I think I'm speaking for most of my neighbors, is the stormwater. When you put roads in there and you allow that stormwater to come down, my question is, what's going to happen to our property? Who's going to compensate? Is it fair for us to have to pay to fix if it is damaged? I mean, I'm watching my land erode after every, after every storm, basically. Another concern I have is the septic system that you guys were just talking about. I'm in the business, I'm DEQ certified, I'm a plumbing and utility contractor. So I'm not, I'm not dumb. I understand that money talks and it's progression right here. And I've been- I understand that money talks and it's progression right here, and I've been fortunate enough to live out there for that amount of time and just look at the woods. But I can tell you, with a private well, even with an aerobic system as an acre tract, I met with DEQ yesterday on a site about the same thing. Again, if they're going to get city water from Edmund, that's, that's one thing that'd be great, I suppose. I'm just, and I speak for, I thank my neighbors, we're more concerned about the stormwater and what it's going to do, because it's going to be a significant increase of runoff from that to our land.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Give us your name, please, address.
Brendan Iber. I live at 14500 Happy Valley Drive. If you take a look at that map from the south going up, I'm the second one up there to the property just east of this proposed area. And Mr. Finley, you know, I know you guys don't want me to repeat, but as you can see, I got a creek going through my house as well, and that, that was our major concern, was just the runoff, and I won't keep you guys any longer. I'm not fighting any developments or anything like that. I'm just concerned about what the, what the runoff is going to do to our house, because I, I've only lived there two years, and I'm doing some major improvements right now because, as Mr. Finley said, I mean, my property erodes every time it rains. So I, I'm just, I'm just worried about the runoff, and that's it.
Thank you.
I was unaware of anybody that had protested this until today, so, and I'll reach out to the neighbors, and they have a legitimate concern about this is, these are rosy soils, and they're going to, just like they've testified, it's without, without improvements, soils like this can erode, if not properly maintained or with ground cover on them. But on behalf of the developer, when we submit our final plat and our preliminary plat for final review, we'll address the drainage and the release of that drainage from our property and ensure that the impact would be minimized or no greater than it is historically today, even though the drainage ordinance doesn't require that. We'll commit to that.
I do note that the land use designation is rural, as is the comprehensive plan designation, and we are way out in northeast Oklahoma City.
How many lots do you have in here, Tim?
It's, I believe it's 80 or 81 lots.
Motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to move approval. Do we add that as a TE with the drainage, JJ?
Okay.
Okay. But you will commit to making sure that there's no adverse.
That's correct, and we'll get, you guys will get another bite at the apple when we come up with the plating. That's really when we address final plans, that preliminary and final plat stage.
I move for approval.
Deleting TE 7 sidewalks?
Deleting TE 7, since it was already done on the PUD previously, 1548, it stands to reason that we wouldn't require that also if down.
Got a motion to approve item 10, deleting TE 7. Cast your votes. And it passes. Yes, five, no, five to three. Item 11, SP 476, application by branch towers to erect a telecommunication tower at 10-751 West Garnet.
Mark Kessner, 403 Windsor, on behalf of the applicant. I do have a presentation, but you all have it in your packet, so what I would rather is if we can open it and then we'll just reference it if you have questions. This was a fairly cut and dried site for us. It was a pretty difficult area. It's in Ward 7, right on the edge of the Ward 2 boundary. The, you can just leave it as is and all, reference it as needed. But basically, we wanted to be there at the intersection. There's nothing there that is sufficient to meet the ordinance requirements for the land usage, so we're able to move over to an industrial area and still serve the residential areas. However, that moves us within the half-mile requirement from existing towers, thus the requirement for a special use permit.
You're asking for a 150-foot tower. Why so tall?
I could, would you rather have the engineering group address that, if you don't mind? I would rather have them.
Well, let me preface my question. As people develop networks in this city, we had cell towers, and routinely, the tallest we ever got was 120, and with the promise they'd be coming down in height rather than going up. And when I saw this one, and specifically where it's located, and reviewed the application where other coverages are, I'm saying, you know, I understand co-location and, and all that, but I couldn't figure out how you got to 150 feet.
Okay. And I can speak to the co-location aspect, but I'll let the engineer speak to the specific height. We do prefer, from branch towers or any of the carriers and any of the tower companies, to have that a little bit extra height or the ability to go a little taller, because within this market, most carriers like that 125 to 150 range. And so the existing tower, for instance, that's a little bit there further east, it's only 100 feet tall, and so the next carrier on it's got to go 90, an additional carrier go 80, and so at that point, you're going too low for it to be substantial. But specifically to the height, we go off of what the engineer requests, and so I'll let him speak to.
But the engineer always requests all he, all he can build. How much do you need?
Good afternoon, I'm Chris Gale. I'm at 100717 Southworth, 33 Terrace in Yukon, representing T-Mobile and our applicant. The request for 150 feet on this particular tower is just to maximize that particular coverage area. We do have some coverage in that area, but we would like to expand it. At the, at the particular location, with the industrial and the dense urban to the, to the east of the area, to maximize the coverage that way would better serve our customers and provide much better service in that area, whereas if you, if we were to go on the, the Tower of the West at, excuse me, the Tower of the East at 90 feet, it'd significantly impact what we already have. It would actually overlap a lot of the coverage there, and it's not going to come over into the west where we'd like to have our, have our customers served.
What would happen if you had a 120-foot tower instead of the 150?
Unfortunately, I haven't prepared an analysis at any other height except for 150 due to just the request at 150. I would have to come back with a, with a separate analysis, bring it down 30 feet in that area, but we could definitely consider bringing the Rad Center down.
This is one of those where we're not scientists, and I don't know anything about what he's going to talk about when he comes back in. My, my, when I read the 150 foot, I just shook my head and said, "Well, everybody would like to have that. How about 75? Cut it in half," because you've got residential people, you know, within the perimeter. I mean, there, you know, people whose houses are out there.
Absolutely, and.
And so, well, let me finish, because I won't vote for 150. You know, even though you want the maximum where it is, but that goes, you know, that's out here by KOCTV, one of their big old giant towers. That's what you're trying to do right here in the middle of residential areas. I would prefer that you come back with a really significant analysis of what a tower of 75 feet would do for you.
Yeah, and that's no problem, sir. I would be happy to redo the analysis at that particular location. We're looking more towards the location rather than the height.
Okay. The location, you know, I mean, where it is, that's, that's.
I think we're fine with location.
How tall, you know?
Well, I guess the question is, so you said if you go lower, you can't serve sufficiently back to the west? If I understood what you said, just on, right?
On this one, and.
That's your concern?
My concern, yes, I would like to get as high as possible to give the maximum coverage footprint from the assets we're going to build in the area. However, the, the location in the east that.
Is 90.
That is 90 feet, again, that's, that's.
Too small.
Yeah, we would like to consider that because it's existing, but it just, it does not fit what I want to do with this particular area. So, again, I would be happy to rerun this analysis.
Okay.
At a, at a lower Rad Center. I know you said 75 feet.
That's too low.
Give us 120 feet.
120 feet.
I don't think 75 is reasonable anymore.
I was going to say 40.
I know. And you didn't want an EMD sign, I know.
Because I think it's in an excellent area.
Yeah.
When you look at, when you look at where this is located, I think it really works.
Absolutely. That dense urban area to the west is really where we want to really impact our service and, you know, bring in more, more service to those customers.
We just want to know what the minimum is that will meet your need rather than the maximum.
Absolutely. And we'll, all I'm going to do, I'll just rerun this coverage, the same thing in the packet, but at the 120 feet, and just re-present it in the same format.
Thank you.
You also might think about existing towers, you know, we talked about the 90-foot tower. You said, "Well, we could get on that, it would, it would cover part of the area we're trying to cover, but we wouldn't get on the concentration to the west that we'd like." And in that regard, what if you did both? What if you got on that tower and put this tower up also?
Again, sir, I apologize. I, I don't have.
Well, I know you don't have that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that, that kind of begs a question, too. But again, 150 look like, well, you know, it's below the defined maximum, so it's got to be okay, and we're a little more sensitive than that.
But Nick, what I didn't say, the request, was an eight-foot monument tower.
I'm sorry, did you say eight? Or 80?
But Bob, those antennas look so good sitting on that wall.
Is two weeks sufficient time?
They can be painted to match, if you'd like a portrait on one, one of the antennas. We'll see what we can.
I move for continuance, come back in two weeks and run those.
Two week, yeah, two weeks, perfect.
Second, February 26th, and we'll see you. Motion and second to continue item 11 for two weeks. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Nick, did you want to approve the continuance? Thank you. That concludes the items for public hearing. Planning Commission committees, we don't have one anymore, unless it's the Garage Fund Committee, Mike. Planning Commission members. Planning Department absent. Development Services. Municipal Counselor. We're done at 3:34. That took a lot longer than I thought.